Calling the village board meeting to order. I'd like to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ununder God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call Sherry.
Ermeling.
Here.
Feeney.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Manel.
Here.
Zong.
Uh, Zong texted me and said he would not be here. He's not feeling well.
Avon. White.
Here.
Ziegler.
Here. All right. Thank you. Um, public comments. Uh, anybody in the audience or on social media have any comments? Anybody in the audience or social media have any comments that they'd like to share? Anybody online? Uh, Michael or Nate? Do you see?
There are, there are some people online.
Okay. Uh, last call. Anybody have any public comments? Hearing none. Uh, I'd like to open the public hearing on the 2021 budget. Uh, presentation of the 2021 budget.
Yes, the same presentation we did for finance today, just a quick, um, explanation of what's going on. Um, here is the public hearing notice that was sent to the paper. Um, nothing has changed since the last self-budget. You know, revenues are going up 2.3%, 4% and expenses are going up, same.
Okay.
Total levy for the Village of Weston is $8.4 million. It's being split between the general fund, debt service, CIP, aquatic center, debt service, and the TIP districts. The best value for all non-TIP property is $970 million. For all the TIP property is $258 million for a total of $1.1 billion. The assessed tax rate we're looking at $7.25, which is a 5.24% over last year, increase over last year.
Okay.
Total general fund revenues of the total 63% are from property taxes. Uh, 21% are from intergovernmental mental revenues. The rest are smaller. There's a nice history of our revenues since 2014. As the average increase for our property taxes was $262,000. Um, other taxes, a decrease of $5,000. Intergovernmental revenues, a decrease of $54,000. And the others are minimal amounts. You can see the percentage increases on the bottom, the largest. Whereas in 2019 at 5.1%, otherwise we've been hanging around between 2 and 3. Expenditures, 50% goes to public safety. Public safety includes ERAS Metro, SAPER, and our building inspectors. 26% is going to public works. 15% general fund. There's a nice trend graph from 2014 to 2021. As you can see, general fund average increases is about $42,000, public safety, $143,000, public works, $40,000, and parks is $14,000 average increase since 2014.
I have a question. That's per year or over the time span that you're talking about?
It's an average, so I added the semi, all the ones in blue, yeah, color right here.
Okay.
So I add the variables across, divided by the number of years, and I got 40.
Okay, thank you. That answers the question.
Okay. This graph shows our tax levy versus non-tax levy revenue. As you can see, the tax levy is beginning to be a larger part of our total revenues. In the middle here, it shows the amount of funds on hand that we applied to the budget. So it was neither raised funds for the current year, it was funds that we already had on hand, that we were going to use for the next year's expenditures. Here's our tax rate. 2011, it was $5.08. 2021, we're looking at a $7.25 rate. So money is spread between the general fund, debt service, again, the CIP, and the aquatic center. This is the rates that are going to appear on this year's tax bills. Uh, $7.25 for the village, $11.19 for the slough district, $1.46 for the tech, $5.19 for the county, which gives a total assessed tax rate of $25.09. The state credit is unknown yet. We'd estimate it at $1.53. Would bring a net rate of $23.56. The columns over here, this shows the, the change in the net rate since 2000, with an average increase of 16 cents. And the column over here shows the percentage change with an average percentage of 0.82% since 2000. And here's a graph that, um, this, it uses this, the information from this graph to show the changes. And that's the end of the presentation. Is there any questions?
Any questions? No? No action?
Then I'm not, I guess I'm not sure at this point if I should make a motion now or later on under the resolution for change.
Um, I, I'm sure no action right now, right?
Right. So I'm thinking maybe under the resolution.
Right, right. Okay. All right. Anything else?
No.
Close the public hearing. Number seven, uh, 10, uh, let's see, October 19th, 2020, joint board of trustees and finance ma- meeting minutes.
Move to approve seven and eight.
Seven and eight, uh, by Feeney, second by Barb Ermeling. On the question, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Number nine, uh, reports minutes, uh, from boards, committees, and commissions. Uh, let's see, I've got blue here. Planning commission. Any questions on that? The one, one was, uh, in, in the packet. Any questions?
Move to approve item, oh, excuse me, move to acknowledge items 17 and 20.
Uh, motion to approve by, uh, White.
Second.
Second by Feeney. On the discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports from departments, 22. Mr. Donner.
I guess not really much to add to what I had in my, um, or anything to add to what I had in the packet. Uh, again, uh, as I mentioned, the finance were focused, I didn't go with many materials. Attending to the public relations partners really, we're trying to get some focus. Two right now, I know Monday, or Wednesday we'll be having another, another meeting of the committee here, so.
It'll be here, in this office?
Here, in this, in this boardroom.
Okay, in this room? Good. Okay, any questions of Keith? 23, uh, Sherry. Anything you want to add?
I've got, um, an election update in my report. I don't know if you have any questions on that.
Any questions for Sherry?
Uh, no, other than to say very nice job. I have gotten quite a few people that have come up to me and said how well organized it was and, and how, um, even my brother-in-law, who usually has something to say, said was very impressed, so.
Good. I've heard the same.
Truly phenomenal.
Yep, good.
Good job.
Thank you, Sherry.
Everybody.
Thank you, Sherry. Hats off to everybody.
The bigger cities can take a listen from us.
Yeah. Uh, 24, uh, finance. Jessica, anything you want to add?
Nothing to add.
Any questions for Jessica? Uh, 26, Parks and Rec.
Um, I did have a report to packet. Um, if anybody has any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Sean? No? Uh, yes? Lauren?
No, I, I have, I see Matt Savage is here.
Yep, I'm going to go back there. It was in black, but I saw him walk in too.
In case he has something that he wants to report.
Matt, anything?
Um, I just got back Saturday and, um, still digesting emails and messages and I don't really have a report per se.
Okay. Were you fortunate?
What's that?
Were you fortunate?
Uh, no, came back with an ear infection. That was it.
Okay, all right. It's a long drive for an ear infection.
It was.
All right, uh, let's see, uh, Parks and Recs, hearing nothing else here, Sean, okay. Uh, 27, planning and development. Anything for Jennifer? Jennifer, you on?
I don't think Jennifer's on.
Oh, she's not? Okay, so if you have any questions, uh, take them to somebody else. Uh, please, uh, anything, Keith?
Yes, I do have a few things.
Okay, you're, you're in black, not in blue, so, but go ahead.
I'm in black. I'm in black.
Yeah, okay, all right, so.
Um, is that okay?
Yeah. You have a floor.
COVID is still going through our department where there's a silver lining. It's not affecting one entire shift. We're getting it on one shift and then the other. It seems like we're getting it through officers or employees' spouses.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they're getting it, so it's, it's been challenging, but it could be a lot worse. Um, so staffing update, our newest hire, we had to let go on probation. Uh, we extended him twice. Uh, each extension was two weeks. Um, super nice kid, very young, very respectful. Um, he was a, he just was not, um, picking up on what we needed, where we needed him to be at that point. Um, there's a lot of officer safety issues and a few mistakes that you can't be making at that point in time, um, that were repetitive, so, um, we're going to be having a police commission meeting Wednesday to get authorization to fill that spot. Um, want to do a little update on the drug trend. We've had four overdoses, uh, in the last month, two were deaths. Um, we're seeing an increase in heroin and, um, I think the last, we had two this weekend and I don't know if Matt knows particularly, but I believe with all the medical attention, those have done fatalities as well.
Yes, they would.
Okay. The other two were both in 6,300 virks of trailer park, um, right next to each other, trailer town. Um, a little disturbing is that the drug unit is somewhat quarantined due to COVID. Um, what I'm hearing is that WASA has got a really great program. It's a crew unit, community resource officers, and they're combating smaller drug issues on a smaller level inside of WASA. The countywide drug unit does more of the big players, bigger cases. Um, and really the development of this crew unit for WASA was to address some of these smaller complaints. Um, I think it's a great program. I wish we had the resources to do it. Um, some of the word I'm hearing is that the dealers aren't owning this and they're only here.
Oh, that's great.
So we're seeing a lot of drug activity at our hotels. We had an overdose at a hotel again. Um, we had an overdose at a drunk, uh, workplace for the weekend. Uh, this weekend, we were extremely busy. We had a traffic fatality in Jade on Sunday morning. With only three officers at the same time, we had one of the overdoses that Rothschild criminal order had to cover for us. And we had a bar fight that WASA had to cover for us. So, um, you know, three officers on a ship, you get two emergency calls and we're, we're done. So it's been a little challenging with, with staffing, but, um, we're, we're cleaning it up on the back end with our detective work.
Okay.
That's it, I'm not.
Okay. So, um, with this new hire that didn't work out, start to finish, when did it all start?
Uh, so then 18 weeks ago now, so.
That's such a shame, yeah.
Yeah. It, you put a lot of time and resources into it. What was difficult with him is he had such a great attitude. Um, we've got other people that didn't make it that had not so good attitudes and were not really, um, competent and this one was tough.
So, you know, five to 10 years possibly, or just the job he informed?
Uh, you know, I, I think part of the issue is, there's a couple of things I think real quickly that, he went to school for business, number one, at the tech, and then switched at the very end and went to the academy. And the academy, part of it was virtual. Um, but I've heard from other departments that have hired out of this recruit academy that the virtual portion did not hurt them.
Okay.
And it was kind of an assumption just made by us.
Okay.
So I think it was just so new. Um, confrontation was not, he didn't like it. And just because he was such a nice kid, you know, I think something else would probably have hurt for him, but, um, he kind of had to have thick skin and big charge at times and it just wasn't really the meaning, so.
Okay. Any, any questions for the chief? No? Thank you very much. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you very much.
Very much. Public works, Michael, anything you want to add?
Um, I have just, uh, one thing. Uh, I think the, uh, Crystal Baker's, uh, neighborhood design is, um, kind of preliminarily being worked on. Uh, we got word back from the DNR that we're probably going to have to do more soils testing so we can get our stormwater management plan figured out. Um, because there's high bedrock, um, the Douglas Avenue, Douglas Avenue area, but by East Jellic, um, there's no bedrock. So in order for us to submit our stormwater plan with better infiltration rates, uh, for the DNR's requirements, uh, we're likely going to have to get more, um, borings and soil data to them.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess with the winter quickly approaching, A pound was working on trying to figure out what the scope of work is that would meet the DNR's needs. Uh, hoping to get a number and a proposal from them yet this week. Their initial guess was it'd be maybe somewhere in the $20,000 range.
Okay.
Is that something you guys would want, uh, a special board meeting to have to recommend approval or just bring it back to the next board meeting?
Uh, is time of the essence?
Time, yeah, once the ground freezes, we're kind of stuck until spring.
Can we do it a different way? Can you poll us, Keith, or what? Would you, do you need us?
Um, we can do it, I guess, I mean, I guess what we're asking is to put it on the next agenda as I acknowledge one item.
Oh, okay. So if, if, if it has to happen, then just put it on. Is that okay?
We have to do it regardless.
Is that, all right, everyone knows where Crystal Baker's is, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's fine. Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions for Michael? Anybody? All right. Uh, technology, Nate?
I'm in, nothing to add to the report. Any questions?
Um, I personally want to thank you for helping me buy a personal printer. So, uh, I, uh, I needed either you or a 12-year-old to go along with me to Best Buy and, uh, because I didn't even know how to find the aisle, so thank you very much. All right. I, I just let you all know. I'm sorry. I'm very happy. Uh, let's see, uh, work products. 31, October building permits. What's your, uh?
Move to acknowledge.
Move to acknowledge by White, second by Feeney. Anything on the question? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Uh, let's see, 32 for vouchers. 33?
Motion to, um, approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ermeling, second by Feeney. Was that Feeney or John? Okay, Feeney. Uh, anything on the question on the vouchers? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Mr. Chairman, did we need to have action on items 22 for 30?
Um, yes, we did.
Uh, move to acknowledge items 22 through 24, 26, 27, and 29, and 30, sorry.
Motion to acknowledge by White, second by Ziegler.
Yep.
Uh, anything on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. My apologies. Thank you for catching it. Uh, let's see, um, ordinance is resolutions. 35. Resolution number 202, yep?
We skipped vouchers.
Um, Greg Johnson is online. He's going to come and, um, share with us our bid results and how they're different from what's actually in the packet, so it's actually good news.
Oh, okay.
I think we skipped vouchers, didn't we?
No, we got vouchers.
No, we don't.
Yep, you, you actually seconded it.
No, I did the orange.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are we good? So 35 still?
Yes, Greg is online. He'll be speaking with us.
Okay. Resolution number 2020 dash 022, authorizing the issuance and sale of $4,770,000 Waterworks Systems Revenue Bonds, series 2020A of the Village of Weston, Marathon County, Wisconsin, and providing for the payment of the bonds and other details with respect to the bonds. Greg?
Good evening, everyone. Happy to go through the sale results this evening. I'll quick share my screens if I can give you the executive summary of each of the sales. I think Jessica, I think I can share while you're sharing your screen.
Okay.
You have a different backdrop today.
High-tech background.
Yeah, last, last week you had a different backdrop. This is pretty impressive.
It's like he's in a spaceship.
Yeah. Are you still in the air or you landed?
I landed.
Okay.
So here are the results from the 2020A issue. Just to recap, the purpose of this issue, uh, this is funding the 2020 and the 2021, uh, capital projects for the water utility. Uh, so these are water revenue bonds where the debt service for these bonds will be repaid by revenues of the water utility. There are a total of five bids that were received on these bonds. The winning bid was submitted by Morgan Stanley Company out of New York. Uh, the final true interest cost came in at 1.82, 1.8726%. Uh, the total principal and interest over the life of the bonds came in $128,182 less than our pre-sale estimate. So due to lower issuance expenses and more favorable rate and a premium bid, um, resulted in overall lower debt service costs over the life of the bonds. Uh, we're also able to downsize the bond issue, uh, which means you are issuing less bonds but paying for the same project amount, which is always a good outcome. Uh, so the final amount of these bonds is $4,430,000.
Oh.
So that is the amount that you will be considering for approval this evening. Um, just to kind of see the, uh, bid results, we included the bid tabs. We can go and see the rates that were submitted, uh, by each of the five bidders. Um, this is kind of a side-by-side comparison of the before and after in terms of the total amount that's being borrowed. So last month what had been authorized was $4,770,000 and what you're considering for approval this evening is $4,430,000. So again, able to downsize the bond issue, which still have the exact same amount for project costs, which is that we issue less bonds to fund those projects. So in terms of the, uh, total debt service, uh, there was a premium that we're able to use to downsize the bond issue over the 20-year life of the bonds. The total principal and interest came in at $5,684,25. That's $128,182 less over the 20-year life of the bond. Um, the coverage for the water utility is very strong. Typically look at the net revenues that are available from the water utility. So after you pay all of your operational expenses, uh, we compare those net revenues to the total debt service payments of the water utility. Uh, you'll see that your, your coverage is very high. Uh, typically, we want to see this coverage at at least about 1.25 or higher, uh, so the coverage is very strong. Finally, at least for the water revenue bonds, uh, we've included a copy of the rating report from Booties. Uh, the existing rating for the water utility was affirmed at AA3. Uh, it's worth noting that the water utility has the exact same rating as the village's GEO rating, which, which is very good. Uh, it's not uncommon to see, uh, the rating agencies have a differential. They typically may rate, uh, utility debt, uh, not sure so below, uh, GEO debt, but the water utility has the same rating as, uh, the village's GEO rating, which is a, you know, strong attribute to the health of the overall water utility. So I encourage you, when you get an opportunity, to read through the rating report. It's a nice, um, assessment, uh, by a third party of the fiscal strength of the water utility. Uh, so again, to summarize, for the, uh, water, uh, utility, uh, issue, uh, the final amount that's being considered for, uh, in the resolution is $4,430,000. So I'm happy to answer any questions on the, on the water system.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions for Greg? None? Jessica, any to add? No? All right.
I have a question. Are we going to have to reword the resolution to, uh, match the?
At different price?
So Coral's actually at 3:30 today, they sent me all the resolutions. So the resolutions in there were all tracked based on preliminary estimates. The actual resolutions that are going to be signed are finalized with all the information.
Up, they're updated.
With the updated numbers.
Okay. I'll move to approve resolution number 2020 dash 022.
Moved by White.
Second.
Second by Feeney. Anything on the question? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Number 36, resolution number 2020 dash 023, awarding the sale of $5,405,000 General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bonds, series 2020B. Greg, do you have some narrative?
I do. Um, so another, uh, report here, similar to what I just went through for the water revenue bond issue. Um, so, uh, similar to this issue, uh, we were able to downsize the issue, so I'll speak to that in a moment. Uh, but just to recap, uh, the purpose of this bond issue, this is financing, uh, sanitary sewer improvements, stormwater improvements, and street projects that are in the village's 2020 and 2021 Capital Improvement Plan. A total of four bids were received on these bonds. The winning bid was submitted by Northland Securities out of Minneapolis with a true interest cost of 1.6090%. Uh, the total net principal and interest over the life of the bonds came in $47,701 less than the pre-sale estimate that we had presented, uh, last month. Um, due to lower cost of issuance expenses for this issue as well, we're able to decrease, uh, the bond issue size to $5,340,000. So it's a decrease from $5,405,000. Uh, so again, issuing less bonds, but funding the same amount of project costs. Um, so we've included the bid tab that shows, uh, the results from all the bidders. The winning bid here highlighted Northland Security and the true interest cost for each of the other bidders. Uh, in terms of the, kind of the before and after for this bond issue, again, what was authorized was $5,405,000. Uh, the final amount you're considering for award this evening is $5,340,000 based on the final, uh, transactional expenses. So good that we're able to decrease, uh, the bond issue by $65,000.
Good.
So in terms of the, uh, debt service, uh, over the life of the bonds, um, there's some money that, a premium bid, so some of that money will go into the village's debt service fund that'll be used to pay some of the interest costs over the next couple of years. Uh, but you'll see that the total interest over the life of these bonds came in at, uh, principal and interest, $47,410 less than what we estimated last month. Uh, so here in terms of the tax impact, uh, this includes, uh, the bonds and then the note issued that I'll speak to next on the agenda. Uh, but again, you'll see that we've kind of left room, factored in your current, you know, debt service levy, and then we showed the debt service declining in future years, a big drop in 2022. You know, that's to, you know, handle future capital projects, including the proposed municipal complex. Uh, you try to keep that by the increase of, for debt service around $235,000 a year, incorporating the municipal complex and all of the village's other levy-supported projects that are in your CIP 2020, uh, 2020. Um, so we included a copy of the credit rating opinion from Booties for the village's GEO rating. Uh, that is AA3 as well. That's your existing rating affirmed. Um, again, a lot of positive, uh, credit strengths and factors noted by Booties, uh, in their report. Um, you know, generally a favorable, uh, outlook, uh, for, um, the village on the GEO side as well. Uh, so again, to kind of summarize for the bond issue, uh, the final amount that you're considering for award this evening is the $5,340,000.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2020 dash 023.
By Ermeling.
Second.
Second by Manel. Anything on the question? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. 37, resolution number 2020 dash 024, authorizing the issuance and sale of $2,210,000 General Obligation Promissory Notes, series 2020C. Greg?
Uh, last report after the last issue, this is the GEO promissory notes. Final amount is $2,175,000. Um, just to recap, the purpose of this note issue, this funded some of the smaller capital items that aren't bond eligible under statutory, uh, considerations, include some of the pool and park projects. include some of the pool and park projects, vehicles and equipment that were identified for 2020 and 2021 projects. The total number of bids for the note issue was five. Northland Securities was also the winning bidder for the note issue out of Minneapolis. Their final true interest cost came in at 1.1875%. The total principal and interest over the life of the notes came in $37,231 less than our pre-sale estimate. So we're able to downsize this issue as well. The amount that was authorized was $2,210,000. The final amount for award is $2,175,000. So we included the bid tab results, showed the results from all of the bidders that submitted bid to the notes. We listed the project list, which you're familiar with because it's from the capital improvement plan. In terms of the before and after for the notes, the amount that was authorized was $2,210,000. Once we got the final issuance expenses factored in premium, we're down to $2,175,000 is the final amount that's considered for the award. So in terms of, again, the comparison, the total net debt service over the 10-year life of the notes came in at $2,298,500. Again, that's $37,231 less than what we estimated. In terms of the tax impact analysis, it's the exact same schedule that was in the report for the bonds. Factors in the notes and the bonds that you're considering this evening, and then again, leaving room in the levy for future debt issuance for capital improvement projects. So in terms of where the village stands on its general obligation debt limit, by the end of this year, you're at about 29% of your limit. So as you start paying off debt, you know, that's going to free up capacity for the projects. Everything has been identified in the village's CIP over the next four to five years, including the municipal complex. You know, it was projected that your debt utilization would still be under 50%. So we're still leaving adequate capacity for those other projects. So the, again, the final amount that's being considered for the award for the notes is $2,175,000.
Thank you, Greg. Anything on the que... So that's your last presentation?
It is.
If, could you wear a green shirt on that screen? Well, you know how they do that.
I could do my best meteorology.
Okay, all right. All right, well, thank you very much. Anything, any questions for Greg? Anybody?
No.
Nope? Anything you want to add? Jessica? No?
Thanks for the good news, Greg.
Yep, thank you, Greg. All right, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ziegler?
Second.
Second by Manel? On the question? Yep, it was really close. It really was. You beat everybody tonight.
Yeah. I'm Paulino Maloney.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. 38, resolution number 2020-0025, general fund budget.
This is the general fund numbers that we've been talking about before. Is there any final questions?
Any questions, anybody? Anybody have anything? What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Feeny. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Manel. On the discussion?
I would like to make a proposal to remove, decrease the budget by $10,126 out of account 51101. This is the salary increase for the board for this year. I know there is no good time, but there are times that are worse than others, and I just think this is not a good time.
Well, I guess with that thought, would it be okay next year?
We'll deal with that next year.
I know, but then, you know, certain people aren't running next year. I'm not, I'm not saying that right to you, Barb, but it's just a little odd. I mean, we're...
I guess I'm...
We're up against a 12 to 14 million dollar new building.
Well, that's the reason.
And we're, that's the reason? So it's not a good time because of that? This board has not had a raise since 1994, correct?
Correct.
96? This is less than a 1% raise for this board. We may be able to attract more people to run with a little bit more money, a little. The township of Weston is several thousand dollars over positions here. And I think we, I think for the most part here, I think we really work our keel off. I think we're engaged. I think this board is very engaged. And I'm not going to not run or run regardless of this, but I, like you said, there is no good time, but 1994 or 1996? Well, I mean, everything here has gone up, everything. Or state, you know, but nothing for the board. I'm just a little stunned there, and we did a, you know, went through the committee, the finance committee. We looked at all different municipalities, different sizes, mostly our size, and it's very fair raise. And I just find it very odd that you choose this. I am going to run this next year, and I have no problem defending this, none, none whatsoever.
Well, I guess...
I put a tremendous amount of time into this. I'm extremely engaged in this community, and I don't need the money, but I mean, if, if it's so offensive, then donate the raise to your favorite charity.
I'm just saying that is not the idea of it. It is that we are, right now, we're going to be building a building. We've had a pandemic. Everything is just, I just don't think it's... Like I said, I know there's not a good time, and I will make this statement because you've sort of referred to it twice now, and it's starting to irritate me.
That's fine.
I have never, in all the years I have been on this board or as clerk or treasurer or whatever, have ever done anything just because I thought it would get me a vote. That is not the idea here. I have, over the years, people have pressured me for something, and they would help me if I would agree. I've never done that, and this is not why I'm doing it.
And I publicly apologize to you, and I take it back and I stand corrected for making that even comment or insinuating that. But on, like, on the building committee, I'm actually bringing up things that are actually huge cuts, like the showers, like the gasoline, the fuel island, like a lot of different things, maybe possibly downsizing, which is huge money. And this is $10,000.
I know, it's not, it's the principle of it. I'm just one vote, I'm just putting...
And I have to let you be able to say that, and so I, I might have went too far, especially in my position, so I apologize for that. And I do, I truly do, Barb. I've known you for a long time, and I also will say that I have never seen you do something out of character like that, too. So again, I want to apologize for even bringing that reference up. Anything else on the discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. You were, it's motion and seconded.
So it's a motion to amend?
Yes.
Wait, now who, who did the motion?
I did the motion to amend $10,126 out of account 5110.
But the first and second is right here.
Yes.
Right? Okay.
For the original motion?
Yes, for the original motion, and you're offering an amendment.
Right. I'll second her amendment.
There's a second on the floor by Lauren? And at this point, we vote on the amendment?
Correct.
Okay. Roll call or just ayes and ahs? Any more in the discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the amendment, signify by a sign aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
So it fails because of a tie?
Correct.
Yep, okay. Now, on the original, on the original motion? Any more on the discussion? All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried unanimously. I will back you up on that, Barb, if anyone asks me if you wanted that pulled out. So I will, I just will, so...
You know, and somebody, I know that one time I had voted no, argued something for a budget, and, you know, it failed, but it, then when the budget came up, I had voted for it, and they wanted to know why, and I said, because the vote, the board voted as a majority, so, you know.
Again, publicly, I want to apologize to trustee Ermeling. I can't use this position to talk louder than others, and I do. I, I'm trying very hard not to do that. I'm trying to be better at that, and I will continue to try better, so my apologies.
And you just really offended because I never...
The way I said it, it should have, especially with what's going on everywhere else around us.
Yes.
For me to say that, it was uncalled for, so...
Well, thank you for your...
Yep. I am completely, have lost my spot in this agenda.
39, sir.
I am sure I'm all red, and my neck is red. Where are we? What number?
39.
39, thank you all. 39, resolution number 2020-0026, other funds budget. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve resolution number 2020-026.
Second.
Motion to approve by White, second by Feeny. Anything on the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Finally, our two audience members are here. And I honestly thought it'd be a lot later. It's only 20 to 7, so this is a rare, rare moment that it's only been 40 minutes. Waste Management merger with Advanced Disposal and discussion of impact to refuse and recycling contract. The floor is yours, gentlemen. Just state your name and address for the record.
I'm Dale Martin. I'm from Advanced Disposal, and...
I'm Scott Stensel. I'm from Waste Management Advanced Disposal.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity to come before the board just to give you an update on something that's been in the works for a while. As of October 30th, Advanced Disposal became a subsidiary of Waste Management. As I mentioned, it's been an ongoing project, probably about 18 months, I think. And so you may have some knowledge of that already, but we just wanted to give you an update on that and let you know that as it's a sale of stock, that Advanced Disposal is a wholly owned company of Waste Management, a subsidiary of Waste Management. The company, Advanced Disposal, still exists, obviously, here in Weston for one of those locations. But, so the question probably becomes, what does that mean to the village? And the reality is really very little. Our contracts still exist. The two companies obviously are honoring that contract, and there's really no change, and it's fairly new since it's been in place, and that's ongoing. Really, the same drivers, same equipment, operating out of the facility right here in the village, so there's really no change from that standpoint. Then the, some of the other things that some people sometimes ask is, you know, eventually there may be a change in some branding, but it's really early for that at this point to even, you know, think about that down the line. So people might notice that. Of course, we'll keep you updated as that goes along. But on a positive note, there are 15 new employees from Waste Management here in the village, so adding to the economy of the village is one positive that can be taken away. And then because anytime an expansion like that or additional like that comes along, there tends to be an expansion of a facility. So as a taxpayer in the village, you, we will be looking to expand that facility and adding to the tax base and helping out as far as that goes, so... From our standpoint, that's really what we wanted to fill you in on and keep you updated because we are out and visible in every village street, so wanted to keep you updated on that, to let you know that there's really no change going forward. And really, to answer any questions that we may be able to answer for.
I've got several, there was some talks that possibly one or two locations may close. So this is not slotted to close, it's slotted to stay?
Yeah, so the, yes, we were, with Waste Management, I oversaw the Anago and the Mozanyar Molten locations. But then we went, so yeah, those two facilities were divested, sold to GFL. And with that, right, that's where the change came into place. So at this point, that's why I came as the district manager or the general manager of this subsidiary of Waste Management.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions? Barb, you have a...
I was just, I was just wondering, is there going to be then more? Well, you definitely would have to expand, but is there going to be more vehicles and all that stuff stored here, or what?
Yeah, so there was some expansion as far as that, you know, roughly, I would say about 15 to 20 pieces of equipment. You probably really didn't notice because there was some space there. We just had to do some reorganizing with some containers and stuff. So we're in the process of now putting, you know, expanding with the truck plugins, working with some contractors right now so we can get those in before it gets much closer to winter. And a few other expansions that way, and just kind of overall stretching out the apartment a little bit. So you see some different things there, that's what you can see.
Barb?
I think one of the things that our citizens are always interested in is the drop-off availability for them to bring stuff. That's not going to be affected other than what's already in the contract?
Well, it did get affected.
Pardon?
It did get affected. I mean, it's now on the side of the building. You can't use that drop-off area anymore.
Right, but it's, the details are in the contract as far as availability, hours of operation, you have to check in and all this other stuff, so that's been in effect for quite some time.
Well, last year, right?
But the location is not the same spot.
No, you have to go up to the building now, and that must be much, much, much less than what was happening.
Yeah, we might even see it being a little closer to the building than, because we're going to, because again, where the truck parking is now where it's in that scenario.
They got to check in.
That over a couple hundred feet, it'll actually be a little closer to the building. So it's more convenient for customers and for just overall the layout of the process.
So during that process, when that discussion was happening, I don't know if you two gentlemen were here or not, or maybe at different locations. You were here?
I think they were.
Okay. So, but somebody else came here to address the board, and I was not in favor. I definitely felt that there should be some consideration for the change. And, you know, I know we were kind of told that, you know, other outside areas were using it, you know, especially businesses or even our own. But really, I don't, I never thought that that triggered the reasoning. The trigger of the reasoning was the devaluation of the recyclables. You know, because it wasn't profitable anymore, because the business I'm involved in, it isn't for us either, but yet we still got to get rid of it, and we currently contract with you up in Merrill. But, so if it wasn't profitable and we kind of helped you out because our other bidder put in quite a bit of money to put something like that to match you out in Ringo, I guess I always felt that there should be a little sharing of that savings. And it's got to have saved you quite a bit of money, I would think, in labor and all this. I mean, that, at times, that really looked ugly. I travel up and down that road all the time, and by the way, you keep the road very well groomed. You've got people out there, you know, by hand walking up and down that road to the aero bar cleaning all the time, and I appreciate that. But, and I guess I remember, maybe some others don't remember this, but I thought we had asked if there would be some consideration, some sharing of some of that savings over the next seven years. And I guess we never, I never got nothing back, and I know we approved it. We rewrote the whole thing and put it in place, and you don't have to do anything. Legally, that's the contract now. But I just wanted to bring it up and mention it, that I, I thought there could be a little sharing with the community. You don't have to answer us tonight. You don't. I mean, sometimes the best answer is, you know what? I don't know, but I'll find out. But I would appreciate something back, because I think I expected it a year ago when we had that conversation. A gentleman was here. I can't remember who it was.
Jeff Wolf.
Jeff Wolf, okay.
Jeff Wolf.
And I thought he had said, you know, I'll, we'll think about it, I'll bring it back to whoever, and then we can talk about it, so... I don't want to put you in the spot now, but I am going to bring it up. So I just think that there was probably a lot to say.
I'm trying to kind of, to see how much it has improved because I don't, you know, probably I haven't really reported access and how, what the improvement has been. Obviously, it's much better.
I fielded a lot of calls, maybe some others have, I'm sure staff has, from residents, even businesses, and I said it was, it was never there for the businesses. It was there for the residents. And I've had some go-arounds with a couple that I know pretty well, and I've defended it, you know, because there was also times, as nice as it was and as much as I used it, it was also very overused sometimes. And it had to be just a mess with the flying debris and the items that weren't supposed to be there. It had to be a mess, but maybe they're not wearing out in the ditches, and maybe they're, we're finding them more in the ditches, who knows? So I just want to make that comment.
Oh, Ringo.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just remember your competitor saying that he was, you know, had about 50 grand in there per year to have to do something like that on Ringo. Obviously, you're, you've got it right here. It's perfect. It was all set up years ago. For somebody to duplicate that, it would be darn hard. And then our residents would have to go out of our area to go and use it. I bet it wouldn't get much use anyway, so... That's all I have. Anything else? Thanks for coming by. Appreciate it. And my son got married about a month ago, and I called your facility to help me out because I had two trash cans that were overfilling. my son got married about a month ago, and I called your facility to help me out because I had two trash cans that were overfilling, and, uh, some gal there, I can't remember her name, helped me out. It was unbelievable. And all my neighbors thought I got extra collection because I'm the president, and I said, I'll show you the forty-dollar bill. So it was a forty-dollar bill, and I would've paid double for you to come by and pick up all this stuff. I'm not kidding, I would've paid double, so, anyway. I'm sorry, Bart.
I guess, are they going to follow up or talk to somebody to keep them up?
Well, if you, you don't need to follow up to me, but I just, I would just appreciate a discussion, and then, once you're done, have that discussion with Keith. And, uh, that, you know, like I said, we're, we're tied into the contract, um, happily with somebody local, you know, with the, as of you and, and all the people that live around here, that's great. Um, but I would appreciate a discussion.
I think it might be interesting for us to know how many people have used it, what is, what have you collected and the complaints you get. I mean, um, is there a busy day, is there a not busy day? Do we, perhaps we might want to look at adjusting hours?
With, with them at the curv...
At the drop-off.
They, they, they actually check in, they actually check in now on the side. See, one of the businesses, I don't want to name who it is, but, so after talking to them, then they went there, still as a business, and, and they were denied. And I said, that's, that's not the point. The point is for residents, not as businesses, so I, I don't think I was clear when I, when I talked to them on how it is to be used. Maybe, maybe there should be a little pamphlet on it. I mean, i- if it's a pain in the butt, maybe you don't want to have a pamphlet, but if you're going to offer it, maybe we should at least...
Education's always a...
Media education would be nice, yeah.
And I think, you know, you know, I think it's called wishful recycling, right? Because if I throw it in there, it might go in the right spot.
Right.
I'll throw it there just in case. And, and that's really probably been the downfall of recycling, right? Because just the, the backend and trying to clean that...
Contamination.
The contamination is, is, is always the concern.
It knocks out the container. I mean, I'm sure you deal with it with our yellows right now.
Right.
You know, that if there's stuff that's not supposed to be in there, it knocks out the rest of the container.
Exactly, right, so it's, it's amazing how, you know, recycling is probably a cost of, of disposing of it in a landfill or higher at some points, so...
Keith, anything? Keith?
Uh, no, I think we've, uh...
Yeah, we covered it, yeah.
Obviously, wanted to, uh, allow, um, Dale and Scott to, uh, come and talk to you tonight because we just received a letter, the notification of the, uh, acquisition or, I guess, merger.
We've known about it for a long time, yeah.
We didn't get the official notice until the end of, uh...
Yeah.
End of October, I'm sorry. Because of this delay, there was that Department of Justice, uh, investigation, the antitrust...
Well, anytime something with that many zeros, you know, that, that gets around people. See those kinds of zeros?
We've been waiting a long time.
Yeah, I would imagine, I would imagine.
So expect it a lot sooner, I guess, so, anyway.
Good.
And then I did ask attorney E to come tonight if you had other concerns that you wanted to discuss later, but I get the impression that's really not the case.
I, I'm good. Initially, last week, and, and I'll be honest, uh, I, I didn't know if this would open up our contract. And, uh, you know, some of us feel we shouldn't open it up because God knows where it could go, and I guess I'm a little bit more optimistic sometimes. It's okay, but, and, uh, but we have some other things for our attorney tonight too, so I, I'm good to go. Yep, I'm good. Anybody else?
I just wanted to thank them for their information.
Yep. Thank you very much.
I want to work with you guys.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is there more security now for everybody? Must be, yeah.
Everybody's happy now, right?
Hey, I'll tell you, food, medical, trash, and death is the big stuff. Well, and government, I'm sorry, and government. Yep? Thank you, gentlemen.
It's kind of disturbing you put it under trash.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know what I mean. I mean recyclables, yeah. It's forever. All right, thirty-one, accounts receivable write-offs. Um, you want to go through that, Jessica? It, it was, uh, the finance, uh, had it this, before this one here, they unanimously, uh, said yes.
The finance committee recommended approvals for write-offs one thousand four thirty-five thirty-two.
What's your pleasure?
I make a motion to recommend, I make a motion to approve the write-offs as recommended by the finance committee.
Yep, motion by Ermeling, second by Minell. Uh, anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Forty-two, bank note issuance.
Well, Greg Johnson put together our, um, borrowings for this evening. He actually did not include in the public safety building the demo and the purchase of the GUB site. He combined that with our building. Um, we needed the funds sooner, we had stuff going through now, and we did, uh, hold off and use other funds. We wanted to make sure that the funding matched. So we, um, sent out request for proposals to all the local banks, and we received, um, responses from four of them. There's the four. Um, the finance committee recommended InterCity as the winning bidder.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I'll move to approve using a two-point-nine million dollar bank note from InterCity Bank as a interim financing for the building projects currently ongoing.
Motion by White, second by Feeny. On the discussion?
It's my understanding that this will be refinanced in the future, correct?
Yes, this will be refinanced once we get our twenty-year bond for the building projects.
So these banks are, are expecting that they're going to get paid off sooner than...
Yes, I let them know that this is a two-year, but at this point, we're unsure when it's going to be refinanced, obviously before two years, so, but they are aware.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, any more on the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Forty-three, dental rate adjustments for two thousand twenty-one.
So the village of Weston is self-insured, meaning that we collect all the premiums and we pay the ex, the claims for all dental insurance for the village saver in our spectrum. Um, we've been growing a fund balance, which really is not, you want some fund balance in your dental fund, but not a lot. So we called on Cory and she gave us some recommended premium adjustments with some, the new rates. The finance committee recommended approving the recommended rates return blue. You can see the change, the monthly change down the line. This will be in, in effect for two thousand twenty-one.
I'm going to make a motion to approve adjusting the dental rates to the recommended cover rate.
Motion by trustee Ermeling.
Second.
Second by trustee Minell. Anything else, else on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Forty-four, requesting revaluation services for properties within the village. Um, I believe this was, um, moved to the next finance meeting?
To the next meeting, yeah, where we would ask the board to meet with us because we will have Greg, um, here, hopefully, to, you know, give, give his...
I believe it was January, correct?
January, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Yep, I, I thought it was January, but it was moved to the next, uh, January, which I think is smart, so we can have a discussion together.
Thank you, I for, I was, when he said that, I just went along with it.
I thought it was December too, I'm sorry, so I, I said it. All right, so, uh...
I'll move to, uh, postpone until the January meeting when we can meet with the joint finance...
Move by, move by White to postpone.
Second.
Until, uh, January meeting with a joint, uh, second by Ziegler. On the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Number forty-five, change order number one for Callan Avenue Utility Extension Project. Does Michael have that?
Yeah, I guess, going, um, the, the main part is changing the substantial completion definition, um, from the entire project being complete to, uh, all underground utilities and then the road being paved. So there's still some final ditch restoration and then the multi-use path, uh, paving, um, but with the temperatures and weather, uh, the way they were, just wasn't something that could be done, but yet the, the road and the utilities are, are installed and they're to be used, and, uh, Sodersky's able to continue working on getting the rest of their development in now, so, um, I guess, I have no issue with, uh, pushing the remaining work back to, uh, into the spring.
Okay. When did that pavement get paved? Just recently?
Uh, it was probably, it was probably that, that warmer week, so it was two weeks ago.
I went through it today and I, I couldn't believe it, so curb two.
Yep.
All right, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ziegler.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Forty-six, fleet management software purchase. Um, that was, uh, last week's Monday night Public Works Committee, approved. Uh, any questions on this? Uh, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Ziegler. On the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Forty-seven, Altavertian Bl- uh, Bl- Bladel well rehabilitation projects. Rehabilitation projects, yep, okay. What's your pleasure?
I move, I move to approve the proposal for municipal well and pump to perform maintenance rehabilitated services for the Altavertian Bladel wells for the total cost of thirty-nine thousand five ninety.
Motion by White.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Forty-eight, Ryan Street Lift Station Pump Replacements. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermeling.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Forty-nine, discussion and possible action on setting a new asking price for available lots in the business park. Have you all read that a little bit? Because right now, we're currently at twenty-five thousand, and we think we should go to thirty-four off of the last, um, appraisal by, um, Scott Williams and Associates. I, I agree with this. I, I actually think that's a good thought, so, uh, your, uh, question by White?
Actually, I have a comment. Um, I, I know we, for me, I can see us charging enough per acre minus the prohaska property to recover our cost of borrowing and finance the money that we brought to pay for this land. My question is, um, I think we should also have some flexibility in this, since we don't have any TIF money allegedly to use that we put, and I know we have in the past given rebates on the cost per acre when they buy land. But I, I don't know if we need to tie ourselves into a fixed number at this point. I have no problem with it, but I just think we need to have some flexibility with how much.
Well, don't, don't we need some consistency that with people, I mean, buying right next to each other or right after each other? I mean, we held twenty-five to that factor, but I, I think we need to break away from that, especially with that appraisal. And I, thirty-four was the number, right?
Yep.
I, I don't know how we, as a municipality, I mean, somebody else help me here.
I think if, to your, to, to trustee White's point, I guess, if there's some room that you wish to negotiate, I think that's something that comes in later.
Right.
We have to start, we have to have a starting point.
Okay.
And this is where we start.
Yep.
You convinced me. Okay?
Then it would be the absolute...
If it, if it's a car manufacturer, you know, we're going to woo them to come in, but, yeah, okay.
Well, one of the issues, we don't have a lot of money to provide for businesses as far as cash ready, money to get the site ready.
Right.
And one of the things that we have done in the past was to negotiate, um, the price of the land, which we have a lot of. And, um, first off, it gets it off, it gets, puts it back on the tax form, I think that's always a good thing. Yeah, it, it, you can have some bad feelings amongst your developers and the people that want to buy the land, but I think we need to have a little flexibility.
Right.
Not a lot, but a little.
Asking price of thirty-four.
Thirty-four, yes, asking. You know, last week at planning, uh, they, uh, Keith and, and some others shared the, uh, the rendition of Tommy Docks. I was shocked. I mean, if, if you want to see that, have them send you the email. I, I was shocked. Are you laughing?
Yeah, no, I am, that's a smile.
Okay.
Because I'm...
I couldn't, I couldn't believe it. I thought it was going to be a shack with a couple, you know, this, and... This thing is beautiful, absolutely beautiful, and, uh, what a, what a nice treat to be able to have that go up there, so, holy man.
I think the TIF though, doesn't, correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't the TIF actually have the option of selling it based on the number of jobs bringing and that's a but for?
Oh, yeah, there is a but for.
So we adopted this policy to be, um, more of a pay-as-you-go model, not as the upfront incentives anymore. I, I think that was, that's kind of a shift in how it's been done, as compared to how it's been done in the past. So, um, and I guess that's what, that's what the but for, and that we want to tie it, job creation, that's one thing we can do. Uh, and we, we discussed that with the PGA Development Agreement. And, um, you know, we still have some discussion to take place with Tommy Docks people, but, um, I guess based on what, what the appraisal said, it was certainly indicating that there was a discount in the land value that was actually there to the advantage already, so, um, I think we just want to, again, we just want to be consistent and, as our, our attorney has pointed out, if we're, if we're on the record as having sold land at whatever price and somebody thinks it's not right, you know, any citizen potentially challenges, we have to defend it, so...
Well, with this information in hand now, it'd be hard to defend when we got an appraised appraisal at thirty-four.
Right.
And that's will be effective if we approve this tonight.
Right.
Correct? Okay, good. As of today, okay, good. All right.
I think we apply that to all, any unsold lots that we have over there, whether that's on the former shooter property or the...
Business property.
Business property.
And film.
Yes.
We have any left of this.
There's nothing left, yeah.
Well, in the event we did.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, uh, do we have a motion and a second on the floor?
Move to, uh, move to increase the lot price to thirty-four thousand dollars per acre.
Motion by Feeny.
Second.
Second by John. Sorry, I did hear it first. And, um, let's see, anything else on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Uh, this next portion here, are we going into nineteen-eight-five-one-G? Do we need to go through one-E also? So is this, do we need both tonight?
I guess that's up to you. I guess the, the, um, potential to confer with legal counsel could actually apply to either one, I suppose, although we have already obtained Matt's, uh, opinions on the CDB contract. Um, it's a question of whether there was any motivation on the board's part to, uh, uh, find out if anything on the options with the, uh, with the advanced disposal slash...
Oh, okay.
...management contract, but...
So man, okay, I didn't know that, okay.
We don't, if, if you don't need to do that, then I guess...
So I'm, I'm, I'll do both and we can have a quick, okay. Uh, moved it, moved, uh, let's see. Moved to closed session for nineteen-point-eight-five-one, parent one, parent E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And move to closed sessions per nineteen-point-eight-five, parent one, parent G. Conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Uh, bullet points, Wausau Central Wisconsin Convention and Visitors Bureau Agreement and advanced disposal refu- refuse and recycling contract.
So move.
Move by, uh, Ermeling.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the discussion? All those in, no.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote, yep. I knew I was missing something. Roll call vote, Cherry?
Ermeling?
Aye.
Feeny?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Minell?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Need more?
Aye.
We are in closed session. All right, we're in open session. Are you turned on? So that's, that's something nice and acutely to hear. Possible action on closed session items.
Uh, move to give, uh, the, uh, the Central Wisconsin Convention Visitors Bureau a thirty-day notice, no later than November thirty, November thirty-first stating...
There's no November thirty-first.
I'm sorry?
There is no November...
Oh, November thirtieth, thank you. I knew, I knew one of you would catch me. Uh, stating that we will be not renewing our, uh, our contract with the bureau.
Okay, we have a motion? Is that clear? Yeah?
Second.
Second by trustee Ziegler. On the discussion?
Yeah, I thought we were going to make, send them a notice saying effective December thirty-first. I guess I was...
Yeah, it'll be effective, but the notice will go thirty days in advance.
Okay.
Yep.
But it, I don't think time is our friend on this.
No.
Yeah.
Um, the, the fact that, that it appears there's, could be some concerns.
Right.
Um, we might want to do whatever Matt is recommending sooner.
Immediately, immediately.
Immediately, and, and...
I don't have any problem with it, I just thought that we had, we had kind of talked about...
Should we amend it to this week?
Yeah, I can't...
To the seventeenth?
To the seventeenth, yep.
Well, you said do it before that date, and I'll do it right away.
Okay, there you go, perfect, perfect. Good questions, everybody.
So it'll be thirty days from when it goes out?
Right.
Correct.
Uh, he'll have it out this week.
Right, but I'm saying that the determination date will be thirty days from that date.
Right.
Or the determination date will be at the end of the year when the contract...
Per contract, yes.
And it will have at least thirty days or if not more notice.
Yes, okay. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried unanimously. Um, uh, there is no action on advanced? No?
No, I don't know anything.
I don't know what you can
Yeah, there's nothing there. So, uh, remarks from trustees, Steve, or no? How about if we do staff first? Any remarks? No? Any remarks?
I have to let my dog out.
You have to let your dog out? Okay. I wish I had let my dog out, he's gone. Uh, remarks from trustees, Steve?
Nope.
John? Nate?
Uh, yes, uh, I met with Chief Savage and Deputy Chief Finkie, uh, over the last, uh, two weeks, and we had a really productive, uh, conversation. Uh, if you remember in June, uh, there were a lot of ugly things brought up, especially with sexual harassment. And a lot of, or, not, not a lot, I don't want to give that impression at all. There were, uh, there were a few staff that came to me because they didn't, um, they didn't feel like, uh, like it was being taken seriously. But having had these meetings, I can state that I am one hundred percent confident